Hello, everybody. Thank you. Glad the recording is in progress. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November tenth, two thousand twenty-two study session of the San Luis Coast Unified School District Board of Trustees. At this time, we'd like to ask those in attendance to please keep your videos off and audio muted unless you're presenting information or speaking in public comment. We do not have a translator today. I'll go right into three point zero one. It looks like we have for this trustees, we have Mrs. Sheffer, Mr. Buckman, Ms. Frame and Ms. Dobler Drew and myself, so we do have a quorum. We have five people. So that's that. Do we have public comment at this time? If so, I'm going to read the statement regarding public comment.
We do not have written public comment.
And do we have anyone who wishes to address the board? And if that answer is yes, then I will read the statement.
I don't see anybody, Chris.
Okay, very good. Then let's move right on to four point zero one California Healthy Kids Survey Results Data.
All right. All right. All right, cool. Do we have? Mandy, could you pull up onto the screen, Chris, the California Healthy Kids Survey Presentation?
Of course. Hold on just one moment. Let me get that up.
And then Dr. Prater?
Yes.
You're going to need to help me recognize any of the board, sitting board members who have comments to make. And Mandy, will you help me with anybody from the public that wants to make comments during during the time when we allow that in this particular part of the agenda? Okay?
Absolutely.
Yes, Chris, I got it. Okay, so Mr. Dollar. All right, so this is a presentation on the two thousand twenty-two California Healthy Kids Survey Results. This was a survey that kids took last February and into last March. So kids took it and staff took their version of the Healthy Kids Survey. Can you go forward one slide, Mandy?
Chris, I'm not hearing you. I'm seeing you, but I'm not getting any audio.
All right. Hey, Chris.
Can you hear me now, Chris? There we go. That's yeah, now I'm hearing you.
All right. So let's just explain that we gave the California Healthy Kids Survey last February into last March. And this is a kind of a review of the results from that survey. This is a background slide, explain what that survey is. It's an anonymous survey on school climate, safety, student wellness. And West Ed, who is the company that's contracted by the state of California, give it also say that they surveyed questions involving youth resiliency. This is given to students at grades five. We started this two years ago in two thousand twenty, grades seven, nine, and eleven. So keep that in mind as I start showing slides about elementary. I'm only talking about grade five. It's not like youth through survey where we survey much wider groups of students. And that's just what West Ed has done. And I think that's for the purposes of consistency of data over the last. We've been doing the survey since the late nineties. So the data stays pretty consistent over that period of time. And then we give this survey every other year. I think that's also important to understand. So we did it last in two thousand twenty. We did it two thousand twenty-two, and we'll do it again in two thousand twenty-four. Yes.
I've been trying to put my head around. Does that mean you have the same cohort every other year?
Yes.
Oh, rather than catching.
Yes. You're exactly right. That's interesting, right? Yeah. Yes.
So my understanding, at least back in the day, the survey had the basic, and then it had subsections. So we do, I think we do.
Yeah, I'm gonna go over that in one of the slides. Yeah.
The other subsections.
Yeah, the modules.
And all, yeah.
The purpose is to help collect data to inform decision making around supporting student health and behaviors and climate, and also help make assessments regarding student risk behaviors, basically. Again, the goal is to help improve school climate. These are the modules. Oh, sorry, can you go forward a slide? I'm like looking at my screen and I'm all good on my screen. I'll just give you that if you guys have in mind. These are the survey modules that we offer. So there are four modules that we surveyed on last year, mostly for the secondary students, middle school and high school, because there's not as many modules at the elementary level. So I think the elementary students only did the core survey. We didn't add other survey modules, but our secondary students, we added last year a school climate module, which and you see the different areas that they survey, ask survey questions in underneath all those modules. The core module is the most extensive. There are hundreds of questions on the core module. The, we have done alcohol and other drugs as well as drug-free community modules since the early two thousands. So in order to keep consistent data over that period of time, we kept those two modules in place, and then we added the school climate module, which is a little bit more extensive than those other two modules. Yeah.
So it, there is, I believe there's a module on LBGTQ. And I know that within the community and now in the county, there was a public group formed as a support group, and they rely fairly heavily when that module is offered. So I don't know whether we've ever considered it. I'm just throwing it out.
I don't know if there is an LBGTQ module, but we do have data broken down for our responses disaggregated by that, by that population. Thanks.
Yeah. All right, I'm moving forward on my screen. Can you move forward on yours, Mandy?
So Chris Peck.
Yeah.
So are we choosing those? Are there additional modules or choosing these because they've been the most important for us in our district?
That is true. That was great summary. Anyone have to answer the question. It's fantastic. Thank you. Now, the survey that we give is meaningless without a report to help make sense of the results, right? So there are different ways of collecting data around the Healthy Kids Survey. There is a main report that is issued to the school district. And that main report is, I got, I think, I feel like it's almost a hundred pages long with literally thousands of points of data. It is befuddling and confusing to look at that main report because it is so overwhelming. And it only statistically speaking, it only gives you a snapshot in time. Like, I really like baseball statistics. I even said this at my interview. None of, none of the people in this room are in my interview panel. But I did say I love analyzing baseball statistics. I love statistics more than I love the game of baseball.
No.
Yeah.
No.
No, I love the Dodgers more than statistics. You're right. But my thing with statistics is I love evaluating the validity of the statistics being given. That's my favorite part is how do we know how to assess a player on the field? Similarly, when you look at statistics around schools and whether it's school climate or academics, there is never going to be a perfect data set. That's going to give you the whole picture. So I looking, I like trying to build as much validity into the data as possible by looking at a cross section of data and analyzing the validity of it to make sure we're not comparing apples to oranges, right? So you want to get as close to comparable data as possible, and you want it over a course of years and times and in comparison to a norm. And the main report doesn't do that. It gives you your school, your school district, one data set for one year. And that's always been a frustration for me. So what I started doing probably five, six, seven years ago was going and digging up old reports. And I started collecting our own internal data sets. And I said, all right, and I just started randomly picking points of data that would be interesting to look at. So one of those things was marijuana use reported by students in the last thirty days. That was something that I picked. And I could see how that ebbed and flowed over the years. And when you look at it, we have consistent data going back on that question back to nineteen ninety-one, when the school district contracted with a private company. So we have data from nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-six, and nineteen ninety-nine and every other year after. So it's an interesting thing when you look at over time. If you looked at the main report, you would go, ooh, it's like this. If I carry this sort of like, you know, titillating piece of information, oh, my God, all these kids used all this drugs, blah, blah, blah. Oh, my God, that's shocking. When you look at it over time, it's not that shocking because it really hasn't changed. So that's why it's important to look at data also in comparison to a state and a county average. That's really important to me to look at data compared to our peers, right? How do we know we're doing well if we, like, a batter's batting three hundred? That's not particularly interesting unless you know that a lot of batters bat below three hundred, right? So you need a similar sense of comparison and norms when you look at data. So I did that with the internal data, but I could only do it around about twenty, thirty data sets. Otherwise, it's really exhausting to go back and start collecting all of this. Now, what West Ed started doing in the last few years is producing a school climate report card. And the school climate report card isn't perfect. It's not exact, but it is something that I think is very readable, very palatable, and it compares our data over time, and it compares us to a state average. So that's kind of interesting to me. Yeah.
So this is what I wrote here. I read your comments. Have you shared our concerns, your concerns with CSBA, Access, CTA, SEIU, every, every organization that's out there? Because I'm a data guy too.
Right.
Not as much as you. And this is absurd. They have the data, and these are the groups that authorized West Ed to do this. So in a way, they're kind of, they used to be above them. And I'm, I'm concerned that you're doing all this work and probably other people in other districts are doing all this work, and you don't have the comparisons to other school districts.
Yeah, let me, let me show you what I think the school climate, it's not perfect, but it is something that I think is better than what I was even doing with the internal data.
And I, and I hear that, and I hear that now they're giving the state comparison. But what I also heard you say, it would be nice to have other.
County and like school ratings.
Yeah, and so I'm just saying that there may be a way to get that taken care of there.
Okay. All right, cool.
Yeah, I'm gonna brag a little. So I was at the table when this, this was brought toward by West Ed. And it was antiquated back then, and it's never gotten much better.
Okay. So I'm moving forward, Mandy. One more slide. All right, so the school climate report card breaks down the Healthy Kids Survey, and it only looks at the core module. So it doesn't look at your supplementary modules, but the core model asks, you know, hundreds of questions. It's a very extensive survey, just the core module. And they break down each one of those. They take groups of questions, and they take an average response to those groups of questions, and they break them down into three main categories and then different subsets underneath those three main categories. That is, they analyze, they look at student perceptions of support engagement in schools, violence in schools, and then other school climate indicators. And then there's subsets under each one of those main categories. So, oh, and it also looks at a comparison of the staff responses to student responses. Yeah, yeah. So going forward, I'm going to show you what the school climate report card kind of looks like. And it's interesting to me. So first, you need to also know that the state average is from two thousand twenty. The two thousand twenty cycle was in February of two thousand twenty. We went on quarantine in March of two thousand twenty. And you can see a demarcation, like there is pre-COVID reality for schools and a post-COVID reality for schools. The state average is only set from, can you go back, Mandy? The state average was set in February two thousand twenty. So again, this is apples and oranges. I would say they give us an orange bar graph here to compare our results to the state average, but that is an apples and oranges comparison. It's important to know that, but it is something.
So, so that, tell me that, that that state average is pre-COVID.
Correct. So our responses, they give us a bar graph to represent our two thousand twenty-two responses. And then they say, here's how it compares to the state average, but it compares to the state average two years ago, pre-COVID. Makes sense? So it's not a real good, it's, it's, it's not even oranges and tangerines. Like, it's not even the same, you know, fruit family. We're talking apples and oranges here, I think, my belief. But it is something because they do not have the state average for whatever reason for two thousand twenty-two yet. Yeah.
So those bars would have probably been much further back.
I'm gonna imagine these bars would have shifted back. I'm gonna imagine that all students reported feeling a little less enthusiastic about school post-COVID because everybody's indicators have, you know, negative indicators have gotten worse post-COVID. Yeah.
So I just want to indicate, Chris, that I agree, you know, longitudinal data is really important. And in this case, it will be important as we move forward to, because it will be, show us a picture of our resiliency.
Right, yeah.
So if we keep this bar, this orange bar, as we move forward or in some way as a, to be able to, to kind of have, maintain a demarcation point to show how we are in future years, I think will really be a marker of, of our resiliency.
Yeah, it's something. It's, it's not perfect, but it's something, and I think it gives you information as long as you're aware of the information that it's providing, right?
Correct, correct. But, you know, we are, we have our pre-COVID world and our post-COVID world.
Yeah.
And it, and will, will, it, it'll help us gain, not just us, but I would hope that, that all kinds of organizations and data collectors and all that sort of thing to realize the impact and also the recovery of an event like this. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's also important to understand, the second bullet point I put up here is that the surveys for fifth grade students only. Again, keep that in mind. This isn't all elementary kids. It's not even like fourth through sixth grade or fourth and fifth grade. It's just fifth graders. And the bar graph represents an average for students who responded strongly agree or agree. So it's the average percentage, and then I put the questions here on the right of the bar graph. So school connectedness under supports and engagement, school connectedness is measured as an average of these five questions that students were asked of kids who said they strongly agree or agree. So it's a Likert scale survey. So that's a five-part survey, right? You love Likert scale? There you go. It's a Likert scales survey, strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree, right? And so on that survey of the kids who said strongly agree and agree. All right, so you can see where our fifth graders felt about school connectedness as measured by those five questions in two thousand twenty and in two thousand twenty-two in comparison to a state average set in two thousand twenty. Yes, Mark?
So while I appreciate that it's seventy percent, and God, that's impressive. I mean, I think, I feel it's really impressive. There's still about thirty percent kids that are not family connected. And what I'm hearing, when Ryan attended those meetings and we now have counselors on the, on the playgrounds, is, is that our response for the thirty percent of the kids?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, there's like a last slide about next steps that we'll throw it in.
And I'm sorry, I wrote the questions as I was going along.
Sure.
Go back and fix some of this, so.
Sure.
Thank you. Just, just say later, Mark.
Sure. So I, I got a funny, well, I'm not gonna go down the rabbit hole. I got a funny story about that, same sort of measurement. Anyways, looking academic motivation, a similar decline for fifth grade students between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-two. Carrying relationships, a significant decline in, from two thousand twenty compared to two thousand twenty-two, and a slight decline in high expectations. Again, high expectations measured by responses to those three questions. All right, moving forward. Mandy?
Thanks.
Again, looking at fifth graders, another decline in terms of their perception of meaningful participation. Now, funny, meaningful participation is measured by seven questions, not just five. Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I just have a question. What is the percentage that is considered significantly, statistically significant?
I'm gonna say anything more than five percent is gonna be like significant, like, like, that's more than a blip on the radar, right? When you're looking at a survey population or a target, you know, survey audience of like, what are we looking at for fifth graders around the district? What is that, three hundred kids, four hundred, five hundred kids? You know, if you're looking at more than five, like a couple percent, you know, that could be a bad day, that could be a bad attendance, that could be influenced by a lot of factors. But when you're looking at anything over five percent, you're looking at something that I'm gonna take note of. When I look at something closer to ten percent, I'm gonna say that's really notable, right? That's more than a blip on the radar. That's super concerning. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So, good, a quick question. As I'm looking at this data, this is, this is the part where we don't have, you know, if we were looking at other districts, we don't have information because, as you said, all districts noted a decline, so we don't have a comparison.
Right, yeah, we don't have a comparison to say whether or not that's true. So I requested a report like this on the county. One does not exist. I requested one on the state of California. One doesn't exist. It only exists for our district. So I'm gonna try to like collect stuff from other districts, but this isn't like, you used to be able to download this on Data Quest. You can't download the school climate report card on Data Quest anymore. You used to be able to download like Lucium R's, Passos on Data Quest. They took it off. I don't know why. It's kind of weird.
Well, I think for me, for myself.
Slight of hand.
Well, for myself, I would look at that going, okay, yeah, there's a decline, but maybe our decline was less than other districts.
Right, right, yeah. And that's, again, imperfect view of data, but it is something, and this is the best view of Healthy Kids Survey data I have seen, you know, in the twenty years I've been involved in the Healthy Kids Survey. Again, when you look at low violence, there's three questions. We had an improvement in kids reporting low violence at their school. So that's good. You know, again, similar declines in fairness, notable decline in, you know, lack of rule clarity in the fifth grades. Okay, moving forward. Mandy? Perceptions of social emotional learning supports, similar, you know, a decline. That's interesting. Anti-bullying climate, slight decline. Pretty much the, the exact same rating or a student positive response to positive behaviors, which are, how do you feel about how you're doing in school and your behavior? So kids felt pretty good about their behaviors in schools. Parental involvement in schooling, a slight decline in facility upkeep. Again, a slight decline in student perceptions of facility upkeep. Yeah, Mark?
So what the student sent out the other day? My sense was that bullying was a much bigger concern than this, and school connectedness was a much bigger concern than what we're gonna see. And I don't know, are you working as a statistician on trying to, you know, come up with a reason that there, that there's such a difference?
A difference in like what kids. Yeah, discrepancy between how kids.
Yeah, I mean, I walked away from student sending going, holy shit. Right.
I'm one to judge, Mark. It's okay. But it's recorded, everybody knows.
Be in a minute, right, Ellen? But it, I just walked away going, whoa, I mean, we got a big problem.
Let me keep going.
Okay.
It's an interesting question. Again, this is all perceptual data. So unlike academic data, this isn't like math, you know what I mean? This isn't like hard factuals or stuff. This is perceptions. And when you measure perceptions, what you try to do is you try to get the biggest amount of perceptions possible and then summarize those perceptions to come up with some sort of mark, some sort of measurement of those perceptions. Again, we're not talking science, we're talking social science, which is a little fuzzy, right? All right, moving forward, let's look at middle schools. Middle schools, we have data going, they only have bar graphs going back the last three testing cycles. So this is a six-year mark measurement. They actually have data, data on, they could have done bar graphs going back twelve years, but they only went back six years. So we have, but again, it is a comparison. You can begin to see trend lines. Trend lines are very important for me because when you start seeing trends like this, a high watermark, a slight decrease, and then a larger decrease, that constitutes a trend, right? Over six years, if you have a consistent lower rating every other year, now you have a trend. When you can start seeing the lines go this way or that way, now you have a trend, and this is something to note. This is more significant to me than one year of poor responses, right? Or declining positive responses. Similarly, you see that academic motivation, kids' assessment of their own attendance is kind of funny to me, but this is their assessment of their own attendance. They're pretty good on that. And their assessments of carrying adult relationships is decreased slightly from this year to this year. But again, you don't have the same trend line going on here. Yes?
So that academic motivation piece, I, I'm looking at it, is it, it's twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two? So the twenty eighteen and that twenty twenty data are prior COVID, right?
Yeah. And when you look at actually these two categories, when you go back twelve years, you see a similar trend line for me, which stays relatively consistent. All right, going on to the next one, is this? Oh, and keeping in mind for middle school, this is only seventh graders. This isn't seventh and eighth graders. So unlike youth truth, youth truth, I think in some ways is perhaps more statistically valid because they survey a larger section of the school population. You see a slight trend line of decrease in kids who feel that they have high expectations at school, still hovering above the state average. So that's something to note. A slight decrease in kids feeling like they have meaningful participation in the school. And I would like to note that middle school kids in general don't feel like they meaningfully participate in school. But there's been a slight decrease in that, a slight decrease in perceived school safety, which I also have to note, going back twelve years, the perceptions of school safety has been aligned. I mean, these bar graphs from the previous six years would be way up here. And as school shootings have persisted and been amplified in the media and online, our students' perceptions of their safety in school has diminished. Now, when you compare that perception to the reality of kids recognizing that there's relatively low violence in their schools, that's an interesting comparison, especially when you get to the high school. Yes, Mark?
I'm sorry, I just, I have to comment, and I appreciate that we use the word violence, but I'm just gonna, the definition of violence has changed dramatically. You know, there's fights and shoving and fistfights, right? And I would say three years ago, that might have been more prevalent. My sense is shootings have gone way up. And so what we talk about, that as being the motivator, I understand it.
Yeah, I, I'm not discounting it. I'm just saying it's, it's interesting.
Okay.
I'm not discounting people's perception. I mean, perception is a lot of people's reality. Yeah, Eve?
So on the low violence and the question, been afraid of being beaten up? Do you have the LBGTQ disaggregated? Because they've, you've been using that a lot in their training.
Yeah, and that, that's statistically valid for like students that identify as LBGTQ. They, those students report that they are at triple the rate of non-LBGTQ students pushed, shoved, harassed, bullied. So that is, again, they're recording, these students' recordings of that data. Similarly, you see with LBGTQ students, you see triple the response rates on feeling sad, hopeless, depressed, triple the response rates of like considering suicide and having suicidal ideation.
I think if I can jump in here, I think to the comment about perceived school safety, I suppose there's, I, I would guess there's macro school safety and micro school safety.
Right.
Macro school safety would refer to the things like school shootings. Micro school safety in my mind would be, do you feel safe walking down the hall? Are you afraid of getting into a locker?
That's a good point. They don't distinguish that on this, on these survey results, right? That's important to know. I agree with that.
What can I add some jump on that?
Yeah.
Um, so although it's in the macro and it's happening elsewhere, it's, you know, God forbid, but we might be part of that macro. I mean, it's not beyond the realm of possibility.
Right, sure.
So therefore, I think kids are thinking that way about, oh, duh.
Right, right, right. Yeah, absolutely. All right, can we move forward, Mandy? They have a bar graph for no harassment as measured by these series of, um, seven responses. They only started doing this question, I believe, at the middle school level, um, back to twenty twenty. So we only have, there's, and there's no state average for some reason. I don't know why. But you can see a small, a very small decline in students reporting no harassment at all. Um, again, mean rumors is something, um, that they measure in the survey. Um, fear of getting beaten up, um, decreased or gotten worse in twenty twenty-two compared to previous years at our middle schools with seventh graders. And a slight decrease in the feelings about parental involvement as measured by these three questions over here. All right, moving forward, Mandy. The vast majority of seventh graders report, um, no substance use at school. Above the state average in our middle schools, um, but you do see a kind of a steady decline in their feelings about school. All right, any questions about middle school before we move on to high school?
I have a, I have a question about the questions, and I'm just, because I'm thinking you may know the answer to this. When you ask a question in the negative, right?
Right.
Do you, you can't get the response to be, if you change the, to negative to positive?
Right.
Would that change the response?
Usually.
Okay, so.
Phraseology of questions matters a lot in terms of the type of data that you receive. Absolutely.
Okay, so I, you know, I'm a little concerned that maybe they don't, a lot of surveys to have this sort of the double question or the third question, and they just ask it later on?
And they can ask questions that are in the positive affirmation, one, two, three, and then all of a sudden they switch to a negative affirmation in four and five, and it can confuse kids in the way they think and the types of responses they give. Again, we're not talking about a hundred percent social validity here, but it's something, it's better than nothing. And when you cross correlate this or cross compare it to youth truth, I think you could really get into something much more vibrant.
And we intend, just so all of you know, we intend to, um, have Jimmy Simpson's coming out for Youth Truth to share out the data December thirteenth. In January, we'll have a, um, analytic, um, presentation that will try our best to.
Compare the healthy kids.
Yep, try to find corollary, corollaries, try to find alignment, uh, around some of these key themes. Um, so that our student senators can make sense of it as well, uh, as well as our principals, staff. Um, and of course, I'll share that with the board. Okay?
All right, looking at high school, moving forward, Mandy. Now, unlike the middle school, you do see at the high schools a steady trend line in the right direction, right? In terms of students feeling more connected to school in twenty twenty-two than they were in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. So this is in a comparison, a stark comparison to our elementary results and our middle school results. Uh, a trend line around academic motivation, that is probably in the wrong direction in terms of how I would want it to look. Um, kids feeling pretty good about their own attendance and a, and a really consistent response, um, percentage to caring adult relationships. Yeah, Mark?
And again, I just have the, my sense, walking away from Student Senate, was this one appear, appear in the negative on every response or they are close to every response from every school, this this connected this question.
We'll see how it compares to youth truth, because I think youth truth really gets, uh, academic motivation is one of their criteria too. So I think the comparison might be bring some better validity to the view for our analysis. All right, moving forward, Mandy.
But you know what, I was, you know, one of the things Chris noticed is that across this is that caring relationship with adults, that's pretty strong within our district, that really.
Oh, at all three grade levels?
And it, and it really kind of was, ca- ca- is a very strong presence in each of our schools. But, you know, looking what Mark's saying, even though Student Senate is, it's a small sample.
Yeah.
Right, and so this is a, a larger sample and, you know, what is true representation, I would.
Yeah, I think the voices at Student Senate, again, you're looking at the voices of what, like fifty to sixty kids versus, you know, over a thousand, a couple thousand students, right?
Well, and also putting it into context, we were at Student Senate last meeting uh, talking about students, uh, school safety.
Right.
And, and the activity we were doing, asked the students, what represents safe schools? What in your mind, uh, represents, what are the key factors in safety? So what, what you were hearing during the Student Senate was, um, what represents school safety is, um, is, um, I, uh, adult relationships, uh, it was, it was safe, it was, uh, trust. It was, um, addressing bullying, it was all those elements, not, we didn't hear anything about drugs, we didn't hear anything about fencing or gates, we heard everything about relationships. And, um, and so I think we'd even have to unpack the origins of that feedback.
Yeah.
That we were asking kids to give. So it's, when we look at this data, it, it does help us if we have the right frame about what it is we're asking the kids to respond to. And so, um, I, yeah, Youth Truth and, and this particular survey will give us the, I think, a valid, uh, will have much more validity.
Yeah, if you can build in some overlays, right, on the graphs and responses, yeah. They might have different, I'm sure they're gonna have, um, different phrasing to their questions. But again, if you can begin to see some overlap and some themes, then you build in validity to your analysis. All right, um, moving on, high expectations. Um, a slight decrease between, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, but far above the state average in terms of students feeling like there's high expectations for them at school at, uh, ninth and eleventh grade levels. Um, slight decrease in meaningful, their feelings around meaningful participation or almost a significant decrease, but again, still within the twenty twenty state average. Um, an increase in our, not, in students' feelings of perceptions of school safety in direct contrast to middle school and elementary schools. Isn't that interesting? Like, I'm fascinated by that.
So when you go to meaningful relationships, second one down?
Yeah.
Can you read those white numbers in the bar?
Twenty-six, thirty-two, twenty-three.
Right, so if you reverse that, that's a huge, it seems like a large percent. Like seventy percent not feeling great about it.
Yeah.
So while I appreciate there's an increase in the change, that looks like a low number, a low percent.
Not like.
I don't wanna say, oh, there was an increase, you know, I appreciate that there's an increase, but, and I know it sounds to me like you guys are working on M T S S, again, counselors on the playground, a bunch of stuff. Yeah, it's just not a great number.
It's not happening. I just.
I think. I, I think, Mark, what you're talking about though is in this slide, meaningful participation. And that's, you know, that's clearly something we hear from our student board reps all the time. We, we feel like we need to be able to get our students more engaged in things going on at school. So this is also something, though, that I think our students are, are well aware of and, and, and obviously, they feel like it needs work as well.
But I, I, I'm gonna respond, and I think as a district, it's something we are trying to focus. It's been something we've been noticing, hence extracurricular athletics, I N O A to kind of address. And these things take time to really kind of.
Move the needle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a different take on it because I, I thought that, uh, the way I interpreted this meaningful, uh, participation is the, the feedback we've been getting from, uh, Student Senate, from Youth Truth, is that students are interested in, um, uh, meaningful and purposeful instruction and engaging instruction. And so that was, that was the way I looked at this, and I thought, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Participation, I, this, this mirrors what we've been hearing as a, a kind of a, um, a, a strong call from students.
Yeah, meaningful participation similarly in youth truth is, is kind of a low mark, watermark for a lot of schools in the district overall. But you can see, when you look at the state average, it's a low mo- wa- watermark elsewhere. I, I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm doing badly if everybody around me is doing worse, right? So, but you wanna be above the state average and you wanna try for growth. But again, my assessment of how we're, how I'm doing is gonna be in comparison to norms.
Sir, Chris, help me understand. I'm not gonna consider I'm doing badly if people are doing worse. And I'm sorry that that's not gonna wash with me. We can be better as a school district. I don't, yeah, I just disagree.
Yeah, I kinda have to agree. It's sort of like saying, you know, we're all, the, everybody's on fire, but our shoes haven't melted to the ground.
And this is an area for growth. I mean, without question, I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount that. I'm just saying, you know, I.
Nobody is.
I, this is a struggle that is consistent across the board in a lot of school districts across the state. And I'm gonna guess, if we looked at Youth Truth, it would be a similar low watermark in comparison in the nature, uh, in comparison to the nation, because Youth Truth is a nationwide survey, right?
Yeah.
So when you look at these five questions, this is a kid's response about whether or not they agree or strongly agree with that. And I think that when you look at everything in comparison to the norms, you're like, okay, we should do better. But am I gonna feel like this is really like, uh, alarm bells for me on that? Not necessarily, in comparison to some of the other criteria where you can see trend lines, but that's just me.
Ellen, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Um, so Chris, just to be clear, on, say, the meaningful participation, is this a, um, when we see, is, are, the, the graph represents kind of the, the averaging of all of those topics? Because I'm thinking, when I look at those, yeah, so I think that perhaps, and I could be wrong on some of these, it can be a little misleading that they could say, you know, eighty percent of students could say I do interesting activities, but, you know, ten percent say I help decide rules. Rules, so I feel that that can be, you know, some of these, um, unpacking them a little bit more, you know, I do things, I have a, I do things that make a difference. They may feel great about, and then something else they may feel so, you know, so that we're working on the, the right things. Um, as we, as we move forward.
So let me give you an example of what we've done at Pacific Beach. So this was also a low watermark for us at Pacific Beach, both on Youth Truth and on our Healthy Kids Survey results. Now, we tend at Pacific Beach to be much higher in terms of students' perceptions around their, um, you know, their feelings about school in general, but this was a lower area for us than our other categories. So we started looking at the issues, like each one of these questions, and trying to address them specifically in our classes. So all of our classes, we have kids talk about norms and behaviors that they should exhibit, and we do that with intention. We say, hey, look, we had kids respond on our survey that they didn't feel that they had meaningful participation in the school. Here's our survey results. We show it to the kids, and we say, so here's what we're gonna do to try to address it. It's something we're able to easily do, right? Yeah, Mark?
So I, I wanna, I, I'd love to go back to the one above it, high expectations.
Um, yeah.
You know, what I'm wondering about, you know, we talk about disaggregating data. I'm assuming that this is all of, you know, since this is all this, the, the eleventh graders, ninth and eleventh graders.
Yeah.
That, 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 this is, this to me is something we should be proud of because one of the things we always hear about, unless I'm wrong, is, is our target groups feel like they're, they're expected less. That they have, that they have lower expectations. So I'm wondering if we look at this, can we, do we tease out the data and say, oh, our, our S E D kids, for instance, aren't feeling that they're receiving the same high expectations as our non-S E D kids? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy with these scores. I'd love, you know, just to know just a slight bit more about it. Because I, high expectations is one of those things we really wanna, we really want our students to feel in school.
Yeah, I, I would be really interested to see S E D disaggregated out of the data, but that is not an indicator that kids mark on the Healthy Kids Survey. So there's no income indicator on the Healthy Kids Survey to turn, to tease out who identifies as S E D. So we have no, that's not a disaggregated data set. We have Hispanic, we have white, we have races, gender. Ident, you know, gender identity, sexual identity, we have all of that. But we don't have S E D status to tease out of the Healthy Kids Survey results.
So when we do, so when we do the, I'm gonna go back to what you said earlier, that they're not giving us a lot of data. So I'm gonna ask, especially to Ellen's question, we, can we do that? Can we look at individual questions and is this just a conglomerate of all five?
I don't know, Mark.
Okay, so, and then, so the other thing is, do we have student ID's numbers on this when they turn?
No.
Okay.
It's anonymous.
So would it help if there was a socioeconomic page at the beginning?
Yeah, like, you know, they, they have to mark male, female, or whatever, you know, they can do that. I would love to see some sort of way of simply identifying socioeconomic, you know, identity or status or whatever. I don't know how a kid's gonna even know that, but, you know, it's weird. But I mean, to be able to tease out S E D students, to see the difference in S E D students, um, act, you know, feeling about high ex- expectations is a lot more meaningful to me than a lot of the other disaggregated data, right?
I appreciate that.
But I, I, what would be, what they, you know, apparent, they may not have an understanding of their S E S, but parent education.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that weighted, I mean, you know, if, if, if California Public Kids was asking for feedback.
I'll see if parent education is one of the indicators, because maybe I could try to get, get something out of that.
Cause that is.
Yeah, that would be interesting. Yeah. I'll see if that's something on there. I think it might be.
Well, I, I just wanna make sure that, that as we start looking at this, that we absolutely, and I think we will maintain anonymity for our students.
Yeah.
I know that if I wasn't assured, if, if I as a student weren't assured anonymity, I wouldn't be answering these questions honestly.
No, yeah, no, for sure.
So I'm up to six questions that you would ask C H K S at this point, just so you know. I mean, these six things, you're not particularly happy.
So, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. Um, again, perception of school safety has improved steadily over the last six years. And that actually line has been improving for like the last ten years, which is super interesting to me in comparison to our middle schools, which have not improved. And then low violence victimization. Um, moving forward, Mandy. They've been asking harassment questions on the survey. I don't know why we don't have a bar graph for the high school kids that goes back six years. We only have the last four years, but a slight improvement on kids reporting at the high school level, very low harassment. Um, again, similarly, an improvement on the whole drama, mean rumors sort of indicator. And again, um, a good, a real solid, um, bar here for recording, um, not being fearful at school, being in a fight or getting beaten up. Um, an improvement in students' perceptions around, at the high school levels of parental involvement. Um, a slight improvement on no substance use at school, significantly below the state average. And we have lived in below state average on substance use at schools going back to the nineties. Just so that you, like, have some basis of comparisons to San Luis County thing. It's actually not even just San Luis Obispo. As a county, we report more, um, marijuana usage than, than other counties.
So Chris, when, when we look at, when we look at this, are, again, are we able to tease out, for example, the difference between smokeless tobacco and vaping? Is, you know, kind of what we're hearing is that vaping is a, is an issue in our schools. More than, more than traditional cigarette smoking and tobacco use.
Yeah, so when you look at, so I, this is one of the areas I track in my, my independent, independent data. As I look at the differences in cigarette usage, so going back to the late nineties cigarette usage is that this like dramatic inverse line, right? Like kids reporting very little cigarette use, um, in the last, you know, ten years, that line has really gone to the left. But in the last ten years, the line of kids indicating that they use vape, vaporizers for nicotine has gone huge. Like, overcompensated for the kids' lack of cigarette use, if that makes sense. huge, like overcompensated for the kids' lack of cigarette use, if that makes sense. So, is that answering your question?
Yeah, that that's pretty much what I would have expected. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
Just one last question, Chris, unless someone else has one. So we look at that and talk about the use of drugs higher than the rest. Do we know our comparison, I think, I have, do we know our comparison in terms of or county income compared to other areas? I'm just wondering whether there's a relationship between how much money kids have to spend to how mu- how much drug use there is. I don't know that. It'll be interesting. I I think that would be interesting.
Yeah. Um, and also a real, really solid, steady bar graph of kids feeling like their schools are are kept at a have really good facilities upkeep. All right, do we have anything after this? We had a, we had some bar graphs around um staff comparisons, the student comparisons. Oh, it's still on there.
Yeah, we need it.
I took it out, but it, I guess it was in Mandy's version, but I took it out on my slide, so.
We need to leave it in because it was published that way, so we just wanna talk about how um, this was a great comparison that it's always kind of nice to look at, how do students feel compared to how the staff feel, right? Um, and this one's for the high school, and so the student results are more of a slow high. Um, but when you look at the staff results, you look at those percentages, um, can you go to the next page, Mandy, for middle school?
It's actually the page prior.
Um, it went high school, middle school for some reason, but the the staff results are like exactly the same. And and when, so Chris and I were looking at the data going, it just doesn't statistically, like, how does that happen, right? And so we went back and double-checked the data with West Ed, and that's exactly what West Ed was reporting. So then we decided to like deep dive into the actual reports for um the staff reports, and what we found out is that there was a staff report for um uh Los Angeles Middle School. So when we look at the middle school results, that is accurate. Um, there was not a staff report for Laguna Middle School, so Laguna staff didn't, I don't have that data. But so that is the um, an actual perception native with the staff, uh, at the middle, a middle school staff versus middle school students.
You know, I, when I looked at this, you know, I mean, they they, I, they're kind of, I I I kind of expected this. But then one thing that really struck out, made students feel a part of of school, is that huge discrepancy. But I think, you know, our teachers, you know, this intentionality between establishing relationships and reaching out. And yet, some of our kids, either they are not feeling it, or, you know, like it could be a bad day for them, or whatever that is. But, you know, the staff is intentionally reaching out, trying to make those connections. And you hear that in other parts of the data, you know, about that caring relationship. I mean, so that was interesting. Even students felt that there was a caring relationship in adults, and so you see that here. But in this particular data set, students are, you know, they didn't, it's just interesting.
And I'll, and I'll be looking for this too in in um the youth truth survey.
Yes.
Because I think, I think that second chart, students feel a part of the school. It's, it's um, it's a troubling statistic if we don't unpack that. If, if um, if staff feels, like you said, Ellen, if staff feels they're connected, doing great with kids, and the kids don't feel the same way, then there's a disconnect. And um, and so, in fact, I was having a conversation just recently with with um colleague of mine, and and we were talking about this thing, this very, very topic of like, what steps are our teachers taking and our administrators? What what are we specifically doing to connect with kids, bring out their the best, so that they just aren't doing okay, but rather they're thriving? Like, what is that, what does that look like? And um, and so that, I'm paying close attention to that one.
So when when we have this kind of discrepancy, how do we apply this to our LCAP development?
Well, Chris, I think we have, I think we are, and this has to do with professional development. This has to do, the work that we're doing with with um Michael McDowell. Instructional, it it's tied to the conversation, that long conversation we had about meaningful work. Kids are connected through that relationship with teachers in the classroom and the work that comes from that classroom. And so it's not just the hallways and the hello, how you doing today? It's, it's actually providing feedback to students, giving them specific kinds of feedback about their learning and about their potential. And I think our work in the LCAP is all about that, that intersection. And, you know, you might see it in our, in our uh LCAP as culture of care, social emotional learning. Um, now, what I want you to know, and this is just my opinion, that we still have a problem. We still have a professional issue in our district, and I would argue across the country in our profession, that that child or that task is somebody else's problem. That child, that task is somebody else's problem. Until we all own it and really rule up our seas and engage in it, it's going to be, you're gonna see that discrepancy. So the work we're doing in the LCAP are in that or priority that you established to talk about um closing the gap and raising and improving that engagement between um the the child in the classroom and the teacher teaching, and the center of that is the learning. And so I think the fifty-four percent versus the ninety-four percent is largely due to kids still struggling with the meaning behind their learning and a lack of feedback that they're getting from the s- the teacher or um or the the classroom, whatever it is. I I personally believe that when you democratize a classroom, um, that's how you get the kids engaging. Um, but that's a, that is a, another topic for discussion. Michael McDowell will talk about that. But um, but I think we're getting, we're moving in that direction, Chris, is my point. We're really getting better and better at that. But it's a heavy lift and it will take time. So Chris, Ellen, and then Mark.
I I I think you said it all, Eric, and I think our work on clarity is exactly what you're talking about. Why are we learning what we're learning? And can you talk, can you explain that to me? So, you know, that, and that Michael McDowell stuff, it's just interesting that there's such a perception gap. And and how do we work on that perception gap? And I think that's what you're talking about.
Yes. Ellen?
Yeah, I just, to me, when I look at the ninety-four versus fifty-four, I think of hubris. You know, that, that there's an assumption that everything's fine, I don't need to do anything differently. And so I'm really glad that this has been, you know, this disparity in some of these areas and the, you know, eighty thirty-one, that that we're taking, we're asking our staff to be aware of this and know that that this is a perception and that the work needs to be done to uh change that.
Yeah, and and I will just wanna insert myself into that very comment. You know, I hope it's not hubris. Um, I think, I happen to think it has more to do with with the, the ability, the perceived role and responsibility that teachers have around teaching and learning. And um, and our work is around helping shape that expectation versus, in the expectation of I taught my content, I have my class, I have my lesson plans, I taught. Okay, and I'm giving the kids what they, what they got. Versus a mindset that says, how do I best deliver this instruction that in is includes all of the members of my classroom? So that it becomes um something that we share, that common commitment of learning and and growing. And that is a big, big shift in how the profession views itself of of teaching. And um, and I think that's the work that we're after. Um, it it's a, it's a cultural shift that we're talking about here. So it might be in some cases hubris, but in my experience, I was just with um Slow High staff last night uh in a activity, my sense of the staff there in the group I was working with um, is that they, they really do care, they really are seeing the challenge. But boy, some of these issues they're having to manage in the classroom are really complex and tricky and far away from the content they're teaching. So um, boy, oh, boy, it's, it's um, you know, we can sit here and talk about it, but that, that um what we're asking of teachers is a a significant, significant uh movement away from what I feel they have a sense of agency over. And um, this is no way pointing a finger at them. Um, I, cause I think we all, in education, are in sort of a, of almost a, a radical revolution of complexity. And um, and that complexity is falling on the shoulders of teachers. And it is a really dramatic, dramatic change over the last twenty years. And I just have a lot of heart for our people, our staff, our teachers, our principals. This is the work, though, is what I wanna tell you, is this is the work. And if we can get this right, many of those issues will become um less burdensome and onerous, is my opinion. I'm sorry, I went a little too long on that.
And I'm not trying to diss teachers here. I I guess I, you know, maybe I spoke to abruptly, but I do think it's hard. I do think it's challenging, and I acknowledge that, but I um, my concern is that we, you know, often we do what is most comfortable, and we're trying to ask so many things that are out of the comfort zone that there may be things that students are realizing that they're being asked to do also. That, that create a sense of disconnect um on some level. That they're perhaps, uh, because they're young, unable to state exactly what it is they're looking for. And teachers may be going to their more tried and true methods, which I understand completely. And feeling that they're trying to meet the standards and meet the academic requirements and all that kind of thing. And there are only so many hours in a day, which I completely agree with. So this is an area that obviously that there is a wide disparity on. So I'm hopeful and I know that we work on providing tools to address these things, and this shows that we need to continue to do that.
Well stated, Ellen, well stated. I'm gonna go to Mark and then Evelyn.
Okay, so I I had several, but let me, let me just, on this topic, I'm just gonna give a a concept that came to mind and then talk about the district. We are now talking about, and in many cases, putting a social worker in every police department. And it's because we asked the police to do their job, and now we're asking them to do more. And so I'm getting the same sense um that at the school site, and it goes to what Ellen said, what Eric said. Um, we are asking a whole lot more of our teachers, the staff, and I'm just so excited. We now have a counselor at every single school site.
Full time.
Full time, and that that goes to this, I think. Um, and at some point, I I just feel more and more that the the schools and everybody has said it, I think I just need to say it my way. We're, we have two curriculums in our schools. We have the academic curriculum, and we're responsible for creating kids that can stand in line, kids that can raise their hand, kids that can wait to ask their turn, unlike me and, you know, kids that, kids that learn social skills. And so this is my favorite thing, that guy sitting behind you in the movie theater that keeps talking. I, that's, it's a so, missing social skill, and we're asking our staff to do that. And so I think we just need to keep more and more recognizing that. Uh, just jump to this last thing. Oh, when it comes to Abbott and connectedness, are you seeing, is there a way to judge that now? Do you have a survey? Or can you tease out the, the Abbott kids out of, out of this?
I don't know, um, maybe Chris could answer. I don't think we can identify the Abbott students, but we certainly could survey them. You know, we have a smaller sample group, we could.
I'm just wondering, part of the success of Abbott is a better connectedness.
I absolutely think so, yeah.
Eric, you talked about that the the staff is gonna sort of unpack this and work on it. So what I'm hoping is, when we get, when you get done with that unpacking, that that will come back to the board. So we can, you know, maybe, maybe we get Mr. Dowler to spend another couple of nights, hopefully, trying to do another piece of. And then lastly, when you look at these two slides, and I look at the last one, schools are clean. And the very last thing that we saw reported, if we went back a slide or two, is the kids' perception is that schools are clean. I mean, in the eighty percent level, and what I'm seeing here is forty-six and thirty-one percent. And so I'm finding that hard to gr- grasp, unless this is just a comparison to the perception of this staff to the student, or is this an actual saying, is your school clean?
I think one, one was a collection of questions, and this one, it only lists as one indicator from the staff of questions.
That goes to Ellen's point. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Evelyn?
Yeah, I just, um, one of the things in this particular question would be, I don't know, informative. I don't wanna say just interesting, because you guys, your time is is valued, but they're segregating the data on, you know, that connection that teachers feel, because you're not only asking our teachers to differentiate within the content area, right? That within a classroom, they have a content area and they're teaching, you know, world history or whatever that is. And they have different students that come from different backgrounds, but also asking them to differentiate on a, on a micro level relationships. It's not just, you know, people who who are, who who have similar experiences, that it's much easier to relate to, as soon as you're sitting in the classroom that have, you know, different degrees, different backgrounds. So we're asking them, as we, you know, look at this bar, to, you know, they have high expectations that umbrella high expectations. But there's a different, you know, for some students, you have to reach in deeper to pull, versus others, it's a much more relatable. So how in a classroom setting, that's a, that's a dance, and that's another level for, you know, teachers to engage in, that's really.
It is, because it's not teaching subject matter, right? It's a, it's a personality characteristic, which is more intrinsic, right? And that's hard.
And and Evelyn, to your, to your point, I, and and I wanna say to Marks and Ellen's and Chris's, we've been working at this for years, for years. In fact, this whole idea of culture of care comes out of this understanding that without a relationship, without sort of a, a, lack of a better way to say it, developing a higher level social IQ among our people. So they can dig in and understand and relate with kids coming from so many different backgrounds. That's why I say complexity. And then melding that into your curriculum, your instruction, your approach to learning, sorry, your approach to teaching, and democratizing your classroom simultaneously. It's a real amazing effort. And I think we've been at this for a decade. It's just, and I do wanna say, I see great progress. I I see so many fantastic things happening. Um, we still, um, we, we're still recovering from this COVID business. And we're, there's a lot of wounds still out there. I really believe, this is a little bit off track, but I believe that our schools, that public schools have become the healing ground for our society. And this is the work, this is the effort that we're talking about here. It's, and um, now, we have a choice. We can become the healing ground for our youth to become the, their best selves. And I would argue for us as professionals, become our best selves, uh, cause I think it's a two-way street. It's, it's, it's not this or that, it's this and that. Um, but I do believe that um, public schools have become the, the, the place of healing. And it's just gonna take some time, and I think we're gonna get there. I really have have a optimism in that end. And and I think we just need to keep pressing forward. That second item there, students feel a part of the school, and it's differentiated by how the adults perceive it versus the kids. There's our work, right? There's our work. There's our work, right, there's our work.
So. I wanna bring up what a hope I see in the Leader and Lead program. At C.L. Smith, they had nineteen different leadership groups, that's empowering children. And, um, it teaches them how to have a voice based on their interests. And I'm, so my question is, what, did we use that at the high school level this year or are still looking for the right program to use? I'm over, I haven't found an answer to that.
We do not use Leader and Lead in high school.
What are we using?
They, we, we do not have any one, one program that they're using at the high school. They're more trying to infuse different strategies for connectedness in across their classes, but they are looking at. Character strong as a possible implementation for high school. There's also been talk about how Leader and Lead is now going up through the grade levels. So that as it does go up to the grade levels, at that point, like matriculating it into the middle school.
Well, thank you, so I, I think that it's a good answer, it's like a character building, it's, it's learning and filling in some gaps that. Maybe their parents weren't able to, to teach them, and I, I see a lot of hope in this program as being answering a lot of the things we're talking about. Where they feel more a part of the school, because that meaningful participation, ask questions based on. Do you feel empowered, is your voice heard, it doesn't say, are you just doing, having fun at school, right? So the empowerment process comes from developing their leadership skills and their ability to participate. And know their own strong suits, and I know that our district is looking into developing those strong suits early. With the counselor.
Good, good, good insights, I. I was, I was at this, it was okay, at the secondary level, we've seen the growth on, on our student senate. For like throughout the district, but we've also seen the development on, on all of our secondary sites of our student congress. The student congress on the cycle where each specific class, I don't think like ninth grade or seventh grade or eighth grade or tenth, I think every. Teacher's classroom second period has a representative to a student congress at the school site that meets regularly. To discuss, um, problems, issues, concerns from a student perspective. Also to solicit feedback from administration, and then that student congress person takes back to their second or third grade class. And disseminates to the class, so you have empowerment through that process of sixth, seventh, eighth grade, ninth, eleventh, twelfth grade. Students who may not be involved in student senate, who may not be involved in A S B. But they are elected by their peers in their second or third grade class to formally go on a consistent regular basis. To, to help build that, yes, to help build that voice within the school dynamics as well. And I would also say that Leader and Lead, Stand Strong curriculums and programs are fantastic, but it also speaks to Reproporters' point, I feel. And Dowler's point is checking to make sure the students are with you. As simple as that, and we talk about knowing the student's name and making sure they feel welcome. But making them a voice within your offerings to empower them, to give them agency in what they do, and it should be that process. We also work with our administrative teams in the evaluation process related to Danielson, because when you look at the Danielson framework, when you're looking at that. Criteria for distinguishing, it clearly articulates in every single component. Are the students able to kind of take hold of their own learning process absent a teacher? And that's where you see that distinguished practice and pedagogy regardless of the curriculum.
That's mastery.
Right, one hundred percent, yes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Eric, before you, before we go on, I can't see who's, who's got their hand up. Eric, isn't this also part of the expectation with the Schools to Watch?
Yeah, I mean, specifically, the middle school program of Schools to Watch. The framework talks of these very things, high academic achievement, so high expectations everyone achieves. Okay, secondly, it's social, it's, um, um, it's developmental responsiveness. That, that right there is, gets to the heart of the matter, like, how are the adults creating opportunities for students? That are developmentally appropriate, that engage them and, and give them a voice. Then you have the structures and systems, organizational structures. That tie into that, um, that allow, th- those are the things that regardless of. Who the principal is or the teachers are, it's always going to be there, cause it's been systematized. And, um, structured specifically to those objectives, and then finally, um, the, um, the, uh, the, the equity and. And, um, and, um, that social responsiveness to, to. Make sure that all kids have access to these opportunities, um, is another big component, so. The Schools to Watch is all about, um, harnessing that, that, um, that focus. Around the things that we're talking about here, so yes, Schools to Watch is that. And the big thing of Schools to Watch, just so we're clear, is that it requires that staff, students. And parents are key contributors and partners to that effort. Okay, you cannot exclude any one of those groups from, from those decision points, and, and so there, everyone's bought in, is the point. And so, um, so that's what I love about middle schools, Schools to Watch. And I wanna say, Marilyn, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I did, I, but I'm not sure that I can really articulate well what I'm thinking, so bear with me. I, I'm feeling like, um, we are devoting a tremendous amount of energy and attention to. Empowering students and understanding students and, um. You know, and fostering growth and involvement and inclusion. But I, and, and I applaud that, I totally applaud that. But I think that it's feeling to me like there is sort of a perception that there is a, a generic teacher. That, that coming out of a, a, a teaching program, um, a teacher will arrive and. They may be great at presenting the content standards, but they are individuals. And so some may be empaths, others may be more, uh, cut and dried and direct. And so for them, reaching out in the ways that we are, um, expecting, uh, is more difficult. And so how are we working with our teachers to. Who each have their own personalities and some will have to surmount aspects of their parent personalities in order to do this kind of outreach. How are we working with them to, um. To learn these skills and to enable them and reinforce and, uh, and applaud their efforts? Because I get it, I know that it's, you know, it's a three-legged stool, it's, it's the student, the parent and the teacher. So much has changed in teaching, um, the expectations of, of be, doing a good job or fulfilling the requirements of your job. Have changed dramatically, um, in the last twenty, twenty years, let's say. Now a teacher is not just expected to, uh, to provide the content, but also to be a, a social worker. In some aspects, um, to be, um. Aware of students who perhaps aren't, don't have enough to eat or don't have appropriate clothing. I mean, there's just a lot now that teachers are expected to do that they weren't expected to do years ago. It's the speedup process, we just keep piling on, piling on, and, and I get it, cause it all needs to be done. But I'm feeling sympathetic to teachers needing support in order to be able to access. The tools necessary to, um. To fulfill our expectations for kids. Did that make sense?
Absolutely, and we have a golden example of a fantastic teacher that has found a way to. In her career to make that look easy, when I know it isn't. Like a duck on a pond, you know, the feet are moving like crazy, but boy, she seems like she's just. You know, super cool, kids love her, they're connected and kids are thriving, you know, when she was with students. Were, were thriving, my two boys had her, and that's Jane Hawley over here. So what I would like, if I don't, without putting you too much on the spot, Jane, cause I, I of course. Have a lot to say on this topic, but I would like, if it's okay Marilyn, to hear. Jane reflect on what you said about.
Absolutely.
How are we, how does it fall on teachers and what, how do we support teachers and set that expectation when they come here in our district? Could you, would you be willing to share some of your thoughts on that?
Sure, I mean, the classic problem with teachers is time, we need to be with our students because someone needs to be with them, right? And so I think you pick up a lot over years of experience, but when you have a first-year teacher starting out a school, um. You don't get to see your coworkers that often, your administrators, you are with kids all day long by yourself. And sometimes it's hard to know that you have a team of support, so I think about our counselors or therapists or. Everybody that's involved, often as a teacher, you feel like you're the only one, um, addressing these issues, and so sometimes it's. Figuring out how to get teachers connected to each other and to the other people on their campus. That can support a student, cause one teacher can't do everything for a student. You know, we're, we're really focused on the kids who are in front of us at the moment, and then of course, all of the extra hours that. Teachers put in outside of the school day, um, there's just more than any one person can do, so. I think leveraging that team mentality is super important and it's not always something we get to. Talk about or think about how to create our system so that we're able to access each other, um, so that's, that's what comes to mind.
So the, the real power is in, is in the team, because the, the. Teacher in the singular cannot possibly make this happen and meet the expectations without the we.
And I think every, you know, I think I have good, um, relationships with all of my students, but there are certainly students who have a stronger relationship with a certain teacher. Like one teacher can't be at all for every student either, um, so that, you know, I, I know sometimes when I'd have some. Athletes who need extra support, it was their coach, you know, who I needed to speak to because that coach had a special relationship with that student. So just that kind of thinking is how, how do we work as a team and move forward to support students rather than feeling. Like we're the only one who has to do it all.
Really, and, and Leslie, as former principal at Slow High and now as overseeing secondary programs. Diane in your role, Janet in your role, what are we doing to facilitate that? Cause I do agree with Jane, hundred percent.
Yes, thank you for sharing. Yeah, one of the first things that comes to mind is obviously is we do an absolutely fantastic job of recruiting talented people to bring into the organization. Second of all, reaching out with, uh, partner organizations, but all of our new employees are part of our tech program. To making sure that we have really talented people as mentors working with our newbies. Always emphasizing it's important for teachers to feel comfortable being vulnerable and sum it up in a positive way to make those positive connections for kids. They're real, they're authentic, um, and that authenticity, we always say that students will see pretty quickly. And they will know that if you're being real with them, and they will rise to that, and then speaking to, to Jane's point, knowing that you can't do it alone. You really need to lean on a collective, because through that, it really gets you to the dark days, teaching is really, really a hard job. Like Marilyn, you just described teaching where over the past twenty years, you've morphed from teaching content standards. And teaching social studies to teaching content standards, history, social studies, being a social worker, making sure you're up to speed on this and up to. There's so much, so you have to have that network of support at the school site level, within a department. So our work with professional learning communities, our work in our professional development, uh, whether that be in language arts or whether that be in horizontal. Just what we did this past Friday in professional development, getting teams of teachers to come together. In our work with, say, sports policy, one of our underlying themes was for staff to know that they're not alone, they're part of a bigger community. When you feel like you're a part of a bigger community, you feel like connected, it's that social human interaction that makes a difference. So breaking down silos, making sure that we feel comfortable being in each other's classrooms. And if we find a really effective strategy, it's great to replicate, those are things that come to mind.
Thank you.
Diane, Jane? Yeah, I think our administrators also play, uh, a, a big role in the relationships that they develop with their staffs on the campus. Which allows open and honest feedback in a safe environment, right? So I'm seeing this in your classroom, I know you're trying to connect, have you considered this strategy? Or even within a department, you know, when the department is close, when they respect each other, they can go into each other's classrooms. And they're looking for specific things, this strategy is beautiful in this classroom, so we're all going to go in and then try to, you know, replicate it in our, our classroom. This other teacher can model this, it's the same thing with our connections with students. You know, those same conversations between an administrator and a teacher and a teacher who really wants to make the connection and. You know, is willing to try new strategies.
Jim?
And I think Diane just really eloquently said exactly what I was thinking, it's just the importance of. How do I as a leader, how does the leadership at the school really become that role model and. Show for their staff and model for their staff and their interactions with the staff, the same type of interactions that we would like to see. You know, teachers that caring, that supportive, that, you know, I have a relationship with you, so if you have a concern, you're going to come to me and we can talk about it.
You know, Jenny, you just said something that just brought to my mind, cause I was thinking as, you know, as our principal site leaders. Not only is it working this down, but the staff also sees principals needing to differentiate interactions with parents. You know, parents who are first gens, who, you know, not really experienced, and so, you know, as, as, as. As teachers see, you know, the site administrators being able to establish those relationships that are. More challenging with parents, because that hands over to the classroom, and so it's, it's that whole tone that is set. Of leadership at sites, that, that modeling, that only happens in the classroom, because our parents, particularly at our, our ministry sites. You know, that is such an important, um, factor for students to feel well for us, those parents to feel well.
And, and, yeah, one of my favorite researchers, um, through the years, has been a guy named Andy Hargreaves, and. He famously put together a term called communities of practice. And what I love about that, and Leslie, you mentioned it, Diane and Janet, you reaffirmed it, and you, Jane, led that idea that. Education can be lonely, being an educator is isolating and lonely if you do not have a community around you. That shares in that, that responsibility, and that's inclusive of administrators. Fellow colleagues, teachers, support staff, and I would argue parents, that it is a collective effort. And, um, communities of practice is really what we're talking about and getting everybody working together, which is why, you know. When we become divided among each other, it really ends up harming kids. We have to find ways to work together to help all of our students, and at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, right? And so, um, Janet, I know we have two slides left.
We have one, and I'm just so impressed with this board because, eh, and your knowledge, because everything we have on that last slide. Has been brought up and discussed and talked about here, um, you know, we talk about. Uh, the full-time counselors that we have, that how we're using the full-time counselors, we talked about second steps and Leader and Me. Talk about taking these survey results, sharing them out with staff, kind of looking them, um, in terms of youth truth. Continue the great work we're doing with Student Senate and really getting that back into sites. Continuing to just develop and refine the student behavioral support systems that we have in place. And then really looking at this data and refining the social, emotional, um, learning, professional development, um, that we can create. And principals can utilize with your staff, so all of those things we've been talked about today, so great.
Well, I wanna say thank you, Chris Dowler, can I just tell you something? You've been giving this presentation for several years now, this is your finest presentation, well done, man. Well done, man, really well done.
Eric, before we, before we move from this topic, we do have two members of the public, I'd like to see if either Brian or Lena has anything to add.
Mandy?
It's, it's great content, I appreciate it, but no, I'm good.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, I think, Chris, I think uh, we're good there.
Thank you.
Are we ready to move on to the next uh, topic?
I think we're good to go. We'll see about Avid.
Oh yeah, would you mind taking a five-minute break, Chris?
A five-minute break, five-minute break would be just fine.
Okay, so we'll be back at, uh, let's say eleven forty.
Eleven forty, okay, very good.
Thank you. Seven.
Dr. Prater, you may need to turn on the video and unmute yourself in uh, B three.
And Ellen, I'm gonna be leaving, I need to leave the meeting at noon, so um, just let you know, okay? You're, you're muted.
So in twenty minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jane, I've made you a co-host so you can share the next presentation. Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and um, and help round people up.
Yeah, yes, please, I'd appreciate that.
Chris, Mandy will be right back, I think she's trying to round people up.
Yeah, that's what she said, thank you very much.
Okay, okay.
Yes, the volleyball one?
No, 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 uh-uh, the website one.
Yeah, they had a volleyball one in there.
So Chris, can, can Marilyn, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
So Marilyn is um, stepped out for a moment, she'll be back, uh, mark two. But um, I thought if it's okay, because I know, Chris, you have to take off at noon. So Ellen, did you take over the guidance uh, with me when Chris steps off?
Sure.
Okay, um, so Jane Holly, Leslie O'Connor are gonna give a presentation on our Avid. Uh, program, please take it from here.
And Dr. Prater, you need to turn on your video.
Okay.
Jane, you wanna talk, that's that?
Second second.
Much more. Uh, good morning, Phil, this morning, um. Pleased to, to be here with Jane and I'm gonna turn it over to Jane, our amazing secondary TOSO, is also our Avid district coordinator who works with all of our secondary sites. And many of our elementary sites now with regard to building our Avid program uh, across our district. So Jane, Jane.
I'm so excited to be here today to talk to you about Avid, um, as the Avid district coordinator, that's one of my favorite roles of my job. I was a former Avid teacher at Slow High. And my Avid students I started with before the pandemic are graduating this year, so it's very exciting for, for me and for them. Um, and Avid, if you don't know, stands for advancement via individual determination. And I think that individual determination part is so important because that's what we build in our students, that. They are, become advocates for their own success, um, and so everything we do in Avid helps build that self-agency, um, in them.
I'm sorry, Jane, um, for, for the benefit of people who may already know, how do we, because I, because I would be, how are Avid students identified?
That's a great question, so um, sort of the first way that we do it is we look at these qualifying factors. So a way you could qualify for Avid is being um. You know, historically underrepresented, from a group that's historically underrepresented in colleges, it could be SED status, it could be. Um, first generation college student status, or it could be some special circumstances. Um, so it is fairly broad, but it is meant to help. Students who maybe don't have that extra layer of support at home and being able to qualify for and then successfully attend and get through college.
Do we have kind of a, a system of, you know, um, you know, at, at, at each site that there's this. You know, what we're, look, because I know we're growing the program and, and, and do we have kind of this, these parameters that exist at each school that we, uh, systemize?
Yeah, so we're working on recruitment because first of all, we can come from the data side, but that does miss kids who would qualify. So the other part of that is also um, advertising to our student community, to our family communities. In sixth grade at the middle school and then at the high schools. Also, our Avid teachers and administrators go out to other teachers and say, who do you think would be a great fit for this program? That maybe we haven't talked to before, so there are, you know, seasons of recruitment in the spring, but then all the way through the school year, we're looking for students. Who we think would benefit from Avid and then we um, work with them to see if that's something they'd wanna do. Uh, so Avid's mission statement is really close to my heart, it's to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students. For college readiness and success in a global society and um, these are two of our former Slow High Avid students that you see here. Who have not, now gone on to college, um, and so this is really looking at these students who maybe. Aren't as visible in the school community and bringing them in and, you know. Putting them into leadership positions, empowering them, and, and then also being advocates for them as well. And so this would be our student profile, Evelyn, we talked about this a little bit with our qualifications. We look at students who have college potential with support, that's a very broad statement, but um. It, it essentially means by the time that students are done with high school, we need them to be A through G qualified, right? And so that's a little bit more of a broad statement at those younger ages, I think. Most students can get to that A through G qualification, but that's something that gets uh, more narrow, maybe at the high school level. Um, we're, they're expected to maintain A through G qualification, so that's a C or above in all of those courses. Um, students are expected to demonstrate good attendance and citizenship, we have an Avid contract. That has, you know, we expect you to ma- maintain this GTA, we expect you to show um, these. Student, big positive student behaviors, um, so that is part of being in the program as being a leader in your school.
So, I appreciate the A to G goal, but if I'm an Avid student, there's, there's a true. Is there value just even just, I mean, it sounds to me, it appears to me, there's a tremendous amount of value just to go through the program, even if you don't get that A to G goal. And, and do we, and, and then do we recognize that?
Yeah, so I have had, particularly with the pandemic, I had a few students in my own class who. Maybe were on the cusp of being able to reach that A through G qualification. Um, and I think they benefited from being in the course, you know, so I agree with you, I think. The goal of Avid is to get you college ready, but students who may not quite be there yet do benefit from that support, whether they end up hitting that metric or not.
And is, yeah, I, I mean, I love seeing them that you see, they accept the DC, but is Questa considered a college?
Sure, yeah, and, and at the, you know, we do push for your university in Avid. Because we know our students have a good rate of finishing when they go to four-year universities. At Questa, I think is a really great option for them, particularly financially, but our transfer rate is, and completion rate is not as good. With junior college.
And so Avid sometimes has, um, that, is there. Is there any talk about doing like an outreach to Questa and maybe continuing the monitoring or ask to continue the monitoring?
What is another thing?
Yeah, uh, I think to speak on behalf of both Questa and even many of the CSU's, um, they have. Programs built into their universities, community colleges, that are integral to provide support for. Students um, who may be at risk from the perspective of traditionally undercurrent. And you see those throughout, you have diversity coalitions and diversity programs within universities, um, with. Um, additional supports, is it formalized in Avid perspective? Not really, but it is a measure of support in that. And I think that the, the larger point for us is. The data substantiates that when a student begins at that four-year university, they have a greater level of success to complete. As opposed to a student who transfers to the community college and then transfers onto a four-year university. And we really see our goal as handing the student off from high school directly to the four-year university.
I know, I would say that's not always just, you know, based on the junior college, it's also life circumstance. When you stay and where you grew up, you start working, you have responsibilities and that tends to keep you here, so.
So, so I think like when we have a kid that's done auto mechanics, we sort of give a heads up to Questa when they're placing them. And so, I, I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if Avid does it anywhere, but so there are programs, this is what I'm hearing, there are programs available. Let's just pick on Questa, at Questa, do they, do they get a list of our Avid kids?
No.
Okay, so. They don't formalize like an Avid list, I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, when you have a student, use the example of an auto. Um, the students do enroll, the students had like that opportunity to experience perhaps, a student's going to the automotive program perhaps at a Questa. They're kind of more, um, already kind of positioned. Uh, so I don't believe there's a formalized process one, but I think it's a much more informal process for students than. And they'll take, or they to that community college in that way. You want it?
This is a number of students that we have enrolled in Avid currently, and please keep in mind, Avid is only. Seventh and eighth grade at the middle school, still no, so it's just as two grade levels participating and then ninth through twelfth grade at the high schools. And um, I do wanna shine a light on the coast, they're really doing a great job of recruiting um, in that area and I think the city has been hooking up their efforts as well. Um, but we do have a large program on the coast, um, there. One of, these are the reasons I feel that Avid works, um, we see success because teachers have high, high expectations. Of Avid students, they expect students to um, meet those expectations and students expected of themselves, right? That's part of the self-advocacy piece, there is an additional layer of support, of course, we have wonderful counseling teams at our middle and high schools. But this is, you know, the Avid teacher is a person who's with a student every single day. Um, and that's powerful, and so having that advocate and then the whole Avid teacher team with those students. Helps them to be able to not only achieve academically, but build those soft skills. That we work on in as Avid as well, and then developing those strong relationships, you often hear of us talk about Avid as a family. It really does become that, um, and I think even we see a lot of success with our Avid families themselves. When you have an, the eldest student in Avid, you see the rest follow, and so that's a big piece for us. And so that's a big piece for us, is building that culture and outreach to families. Um, yeah, because it does then become generational. And then other families speak to um families in the community about the success of the Avid program for their students. So the this to me is like the key to success for Avid are these three things. Um, the Avid elective is offered seventh through twelfth grade as a course itself. Now, there are things that we do in Avid, instructional strategies, um, this building those soft skills that can be replicated in other courses. Um, and that's when we talk about Avid schoolwide. That's really what that is, is that you're using the Avid philosophy and Avid strategies in all of the other classrooms. But Avid elective is sort of sheltered for for those Avid students. Um, students do apply to be in the class and interview with the Avid site team. Part of that builds by it, right? Like you wanted to be in this course, you took additional steps. Now, of course, we do go try to find them. We say, we wanna interview you, we want you to apply. Um, but I think this process is really important. It's also important for us as teachers in understanding the complexity of the student situation. We don't often don't discover special circumstances until we get into an interview. So that's part of that process as well. Um, and then middle and high school students prepare for college eligibility and career readiness by doing all of these things. Um, one of the key areas that we're focusing on is trying to increase Avid student enrollment in rigorous accelerated math, advanced English at the middle school level, and then honors and AP courses at the high school level. Um, and we do see that when students are in these courses with supportive teachers, they do succeed. It's just getting them in in those courses. And then, of course, our students also um do a lot of work researching college, learning about the college experience. And we take them on college field trips, both to inspire them and also to be able to show them, this is what college life is like, the this is how you can get connected on campus. Um, you can go away to college if that's what you desire, so um that's part of our elective program. Avid teachers do all of these things. We have amazing Avid teachers in this district. They're providing academic, social, and emotional support to our students. They do really take on an additional level, kind of beyond the teacher, more of like a quasi-family role, you know? They really know our kids. Um, they do maintain high expectations for student learning, develop that community on campus. And then also they attend additional Avid-specific professional development um over, you know, the course of years to be able to serve these students, yeah.
So, you know, what are our Avid teachers um needing in terms of support? This is a huge kind of above and beyond, you know, because they they have other duties, they're not just. So are there things that, you know, as we move forward and try to increase the program, that we see that our Avid teachers um might need? Or perhaps we haven't had a chance to ask them because because it is, you know, they get so much of and beyond outside and at the special training, events, yeah.
Two areas of need for teacher support that I see, one would be supporting teachers and outreach to family. That's like an additional thing that you can't really do during the school day. Um, so that would be something I think we could look at further is how to increase those family connections by supporting teachers with additional resources. The other place I.
Are you talking, I'm sorry, directly that they would have, you know, be able to reach out directly or it would be through, you know, counselor? But you're seeing that as a need?
Yeah, I I think I see that as a need from the the teacher, the Avid site team, you know, to do that family outreach. And then the other place of support that I see is time to collaborate with each other. We did have a release day for the middle schools and the high schools today or this year. Um, but we haven't had that in the past. And I saw that as being super positive for them to be able to share, get on the same page, inspire each other. This is what we're doing um to really develop curriculum at age gr- age grade level, so it's vertically articulated. So I think just additional support in getting the teachers together would be helpful too.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to focus on here is the Avid curriculum has to do with WICER, that stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And so everything that that Avid class does is focused on those five areas. And the inquiry is really, and collaboration is really related to what Dr. Michael McDowell talks about with clarity. It's getting students involved and being owners of their own learning, so. Okay, um, here's some pictures from you, for you of some college and career activities that have happened on our campuses. I wanted to highlight the middle photograph here. That is, this is Cal Poly Society of Hispanic Engineers visiting Los Osos Middle School Avid classrooms. And so those are Latino students who are engineering majors. And they came and talked about their college experiences and then also ran a design activity for building truffes with our students, and they got to try those out and talk about engineering. And so one of my focuses this year is really leveraging our community partnerships to um have, you know, our students access the other people outside of our Avid program. And so it doesn't take necessarily a field trip to a college. We we have a lot of opportunities to bring people to us. Um, so that's just beginning work that we're doing now, yeah.
So. In some other successful programs at the high school level, what I've heard is that mentorships are 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 integral. And I don't know whether I've ever heard that with Avid. And obviously, if there are some CSU far away, they can't mentor. But we also have kids that are, we have students that are seniors, right? And we have these middle school. Um, is that part of Avid?
I don't think we have a formal process for that right now, but I would love to see something like that. Um, you know, our Avid students do know each other because it, you know, it just becomes part of the community and the families know each other. Um, but I think that would be great. I, we also have Cal Poly in our backyard, which would be amazing to maybe find some mentors from Cal Poly for our high school students. Um, I think that would be a great concept.
And two things that come to mind, one specifically to that, we're building out um forty interns of fellows with our elementary athletics for achievement or our core program, many of whom are first generation. Um, and several of her do place at the middle schools already. Uh, we foresee the opportunity maybe place some of that high schools. Perfect opportunity for them to work with our students. The second piece is systematically, um, at high school, when we schedule our Avid class grid, we've traditionally scheduled work after lunch, fourth period. When we've scheduled Avid one, two, three, and four, all at fourth period. But why? It's because then they can collaborate, um, create specific, but they can also see each other. So it was very common for us to have all four Avid classes in the library at the same time with a teacher. So now you were seeing the twelfth graders because of ninth grade. And the eleventh grader was seeing the twelfth graders. So was there a formalized mentorship? No, but was it organic? And you had an opportunity to see where you were going? One hundred percent.
Success has been modeled.
Yes, one hundred percent. So so there's those opportunities also. But you're right, um, bringing in and having almost like a big brother, big sister concept would be something that we could absolutely look at from a community perspective.
And then we talked a little bit, um, that during COVID, you you were able to do the barbecues? Was it private?
Yeah, it's interesting because that's, that goes back to even Chris's presentation on California Healthy Kids Survey. It's it's around culture building. And what we noticed during COVID, when we would have our pods on campus, we would have about three hundred students on campus. And the students were on campus for a variety of different reasons. Access to technology from home, the opportunity to kind of remediate and add that extra built-in support in a variety of different students. But the one commonality was the students all tended to be students of socioeconomically disadvantaged status and much to be frank, students of color. What we watched and witnessed each week when we would celebrate their week on campus on a Friday afternoon, we threw a barbecue every Friday afternoon. Those three hundred students became the culture of the campus. They were taking on leadership responsibilities because that's who the student body was. And it was remarkable. And the teachers that were on campus during that time were the James, the Jim Johnson, us, the Dan Munro's, the Kennedy Mies, the Zach Ropers, working in those pods. And what you had was a very interesting uh organic movement that was like a school within a school um where students felt seen for the first time. They were empowered. But we also knew that as we transitioned back to all students coming back on campus, they were treated back to the back. It was really sad to see. So that was an observation. Thank you.
I think it's that conscientious effort to work with our students that's so important. I did see Jim Johnson to his credit with ASB trying to continue to pull in those students who were in pods afterwards. And I think that's some of the work we've done in Avid, particularly at the high school level. We always said, Avid can't be your only thing. Like, you know, you need to get out and get involved in at least one other extracurricular opportunity. We've had students starting to enter into ASB. And that's all because they know that they want to be the inspiration for other Avid students or other students who are like them. Um, and so, you know, we're like, if if you can't see it, we need you to be it, so other people can see it, right? So um, I think that we're doing a good job with that, but that we needed to expand that attitude beyond Avid. Um, and so, you know, the, I think these college and career activities are really inspirational for Avid students. Um, I wonder, you know, maybe there are other groups on campuses that we could be reaching out to um with this same approach.
That, I, sorry, we did talk a little bit and did, I think you mentioned that if there's an empty seat on the bus, you do grab another kid with the potential?
I know that was the traditionally Morro Bay High had been doing that, right? If there was an empty seat to a college campus, they grabbed another student who they felt like, let's get you to a college campus. And so often we do fill our seats, um, but wouldn't it be wonderful to expand some of these opportunities to other students?
Bigger bus?
Yeah, or many bigger bus. Um, yeah, so those college um field trips are not only a time for the students to bond with each other and with their teachers, but also to really visualize what campus life is like. Um, because many of them have never been to a campus before. Um, and so there's the opportunity to discuss those elements of campus life. What is it like to live in a dorm or use a dining hall? Or what are organizations that you can get involved with on campus? There are first generation support organizations at every college, like hooking them up to the to those. Um, so they understand that when they get to their individual campus, that's sort of how it works. And then we also help students with the application process. Later today, I'm going down to Slow High um to use Stanford Social Education um funds for the foundation funds to um pay for student college applications. So um, we help all throughout that process. And um, I think that, you know, it's really fun to focus on the student success. So I'll have a slide about our class of twenty twenty-two um to talk about, you know, what we did with them. These are some of the areas of support that the district gives. So the foundation has been a really awesome partner with Avid. This year, we're able to cover the cost of up to three college applications for all Avid seniors, which is amazing. Um, we support through funding field trips to colleges and universities, tutoring from 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 community members, and then additional counseling from the middle school CT counselor and Avid teachers, as well as um, you know, funding professional development for teachers yearly to grow as professionals. Um, I have a few slides of um data about our Avid program that are, I think, are really revealing. So you can see here our Avid senior class of last year, twenty twenty-two by A through G readiness. Now, keep in mind, these students were heavily impacted by the pandemic, you know? Um, I had students in that first trimester of March twenty twenty that just went completely offline, right? So when we got them back, there was a lot of working hard to get them A through G qualified. Um, so you can see here at Slow High, we had eighty-three percent who were A through G ready at the end of the year, seventy-eight percent at Morro Bay High. And for those students who did not complete their A through G requirements, all of them went to Questa. So they still continued their um post-secondary education dreams, but they needed to start at their junior college first, just based on where they were able to to go.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to ask earlier, and I apologize, and I know you can't do this off the top. But this is great, but do we have, is there some way to put a bar on there someday that's, how does that compare to the rest of the schools?
Yeah.
Data? Because I got a feeling this is.
I'm telling you, compared to the rest of the schools' data.
Okay, thanks.
Morro Bay High School last year's graduating class from A through G was fifty-four percent. And at Slow High, uh, A through G was at seventy percent.
Good going. Congratulations.
That's all the graduates.
That's good. Awesome.
We want this to be a hundred percent. That's our goal as Avid teachers, and we're working towards that. And I um fully expect this to be even higher this year. Um, but, you know, I I think this was a pretty good outcome considering the challenges of the pandemic um with our student groups. You can see here, eighty percent of that of our classes currently, um, students have taken at least one course of rigor. So that's defined as an accelerated or advanced honors or AP course. Um, ninety percent um last year applied to a four-year university. Keeping in mind, some of our students were not eligible. They had to apply to Questa. And then eighty percent were accepted to a four-year university. So we're always looking to get these as close to a hundred percent as we can. Um, and you can see here, just as a celebration, our class of two, um, twenty twenty-two Avid graduates attended all of these different universities this year, so they are freshmen. Uh, um, yeah, all of these great places. And you can see, we are heavily at Questa College as well. So we have students who applied to four-year universities, were accepted and decided to attend Questa, often because of that financial um piece, so.
Is there any kind of preferential um acceptance, I guess?
For our students.
In college application?
I don't know that there is. I, I I'm not sure based on admissions policies.
Is that something that they would put on an application that they are an Avid student?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And if they're first generation, they would indicate that as well, so. All right, so our Avid student demographics by gender, it's really interesting. At Laguna Middle School, we are heavily male, but in all of the other schools, um, females are overrepresented.
Yeah, I I hate to interrupt, but I see that we have someone from the public who wanted to make a comment. And I don't know whether you wanna hold those until the end, or um, I saw that Lena Egan had her hand up.
Yeah, Lena, would you please uh jump in?
Sure, I was just responding on that question about first, uh, whether there was any preference. And there is for first gen. Um, there are certain programs that the CSU's and the UCs target, but I don't think um our schools qualify for those programs. So just wanted to let you know.
Right, we, thank you, Lena. Okay, Jean, keep going.
So I think we have some work to do in recruiting boys at our schools for our Avid programs and keeping them really active and involved. We've seen this as a trend across the district that our um female students tend to perform at higher rates of academic success and achievement. Um, and part of that, I think, has to do with the culture of our schools and and leadership positions for um boys. And so that's something we need to work on in Avid as well. Um, and then this is our Avid student demographic by ethnicity. As you can see, we have students who are heavily Latino um and students of color, so we do have that other group represented. Um, probably Asian students being the highest other representation um within that other group. So, um, you know, this is a snapshot of the students in our district who tend to be first-generation um students.
I was wondering, did you ever change the other category to disaggregate the Asians themselves, or is that not?
One of the reasons we didn't do it here is because it create, like, it just, you know, creates so much space as far as like taking up with like one percent, because we have one student, but we certainly can provide that information, yeah.
So I'm guessing like at at Morro Bay High, I mean, you know, on the coast, we have a significant Filipino population, so that would be.
That, yeah, that would probably be the highest population there, so. And then here, um, I think our SED status is really interesting. As you can see, at Laguna Middle School, sixty-seven percent of our Avid students are socioeconomically disadvantaged, while thirty-three percent. while thirty-three percent are not. And then Slow High is her, our highest SED rate out of our four schools. Um, and so I think it's sometimes, um, you know, a, a myth that all Avid students are SED students. Um, often people just assume that and that's not the case, um, so, but largely they are.
Yeah, so tell me the, what, what that looks like, the profile, you know what I mean? When you are recruiting and, 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 you know, it was really my assumption that more, and clearly there are more, um, um, socioeconomically disadvantaged students. But what is that profile of getting those kids who aren't into the Avid class, you know, and?
Well, they would be, so when we looked at those qualifying factors, we just used one. So if you meet one of the qualifying factors, whether, so you might not be SED, but you might be from a historically underrepresented group, or you might be first generation who's not SED. Or maybe you have a special circumstance. I'm thinking of a student who has, um, a single mother who is a college graduate, but wanted that extra support for their student. So, um, you know, when we look at the makeup of our Avid classes, it's, um, a lot more, um, diverse than people tend to think it is, so. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know, I mean, um, do we have enough Avid spots? For, I mean, I got, uh, yeah, are our Avid, do we have enough staff Avid classes for, because it could benefit them?
Well, I would say if we can grow it, we'll make spots, we'll figure it out. I don't know, Leslie, what do you think about that?
We will make sure we put new seats on the bus.
Yeah.
A bigger bus.
A bigger bus.
More money and a bigger bus.
That's our motto.
Gotta be electric.
Um, so this is an area of growth, I think, for us. When we look at the percentage of Avid students who are enrolled in accelerated and advanced courses at the middle school, knowing that there is a cut point for students to get into those courses. So this is showing you that six percent of Avid students at Laguna Middle School are enrolled in accelerated math. It's not very many kids. Only two percent are enrolled in, um, advanced English and humanities, yes.
So this was a slide that I, I, this is, how do we backwards map? The preparation that needs to happen to improve, um.
That's what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
To answer your question, that's what we're talking about. We should, the next slide, it's pretty telling, you, you wanna think about like, how to go forward backwards with these two slides?
And I think an additional point is part of the Avid philosophy is removing barriers to access. And that could be as little as, Leslie, I don't know the exact process, but I think in the past, when a student has qualified for the advanced or accelerated, accelerated program, you still had to click and opt-in or check and opt-in from the parent. To me, that's a barrier, right? Because a student or, um, parent has to be looking at it, they have to know they need to check it, and our parents don't always know that. And so a student might not know either. And then, okay, you're, you qualified, but you didn't check the box, right? So it's even those really little thoughtful things that matter for barriers to access.
So what's, what's the, um, what's the percentage of our general population of students who are in these same classes?
We have in the, uh, seventh grade accelerated at Laguna, approximately a hundred and forty-five students in the seventh grade accelerated math. And we have probably a class size of like four hundred, roughly.
Yeah.
Um, and in English, we're probably closer to about a hundred in seventh grade accelerated. At Los Osos Middle School in seventh grade, currently, I believe we have about fifty-nine students in seventh grade, uh, accelerated math with a population of a couple of hundred, most likely less than a couple of hundred. Um, and then the eighth grade accelerated, I think it's, it's closer to like thirty-five in eighth grade. And that's part of the backwards mapping that we've been trying to work on with regard to how do we grow that opportunity? And how do we, Jane said, you know, the barrier piece, I would look at it as, what's that entry point? That we can have that on ramp for success? That makes it, uh, a little bit more accessible. And Jane identified an internal mechanism clearly, and we have for years said that a student qualifies based on an assessment, they must formally accept that success, as opposed to being automatically celebrated with that success. And I say that where you've qualified, but we need to know that you're willing to participate, so please click the box. As opposed to you've automatically qualified, you're enrolled, you're in.
So then is there more outreach we can do to those who've qualified to say, you may not be aware of this, but you're eligible for these courses, but we need a, you need to be proactive about it?
Yes, that's, that's our work and that's our intentionality, because that's the access point. And that also goes to, I think, an earlier question, um, how do we build that community link? Whether that be through almost like a fam- family liaison, through our counseling staff to formalize that process of outreach, um, and to celebrate. Um, many students and parents, when they get their ESAC results, they're looking for that in the mail. Because they want to celebrate with their child. And other families, they don't even look at it. And they don't even know what's there, and they don't know how to interpret it. And part of our responsibility is to make sure that we show and illustrate a model of why that's so, so important and what comes as a result.
So, so this spring, this spring, and Ellen, I know you'll be zooming in on this. Um, we will, as part of our LCAP, and very likely as part of our, um, academic focus moving into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, is we'll have, we'll have, um, a refined and revitalized approach to how we're going to encourage more kids to get into accelerated opportunities at the middle school, because that's the key. The key is a hu- a culture of high expectation at the middle school combined with support. Right? That's the key extra point. So we have unfortunately, um, gone too far, uh, making it more restrictive. Um, and it has become, um, unfortunately, a synonymous with, you know, sort of like, it's okay, culture of low expectation, or, or I should say, you know, um, our, our culture at the middle school um, has sort of lost its way with regard to this. And I think it's a key, a key factor in, especially with our SED and our, uh, EL populations to get into higher level courses at the high school, which, you know, thankful to, to the board and to the encouragement of, I remember Lena Egan encouraging this, is now we have AP courses at the high school that are accessible, that aren't math dependent. So AP environmental science, AP biology. Now we have opportunities for our, um, our SED, uh, our ELs, our more typically marginalized populations to really be encouraged to take these higher level courses. So I'm excited for where that goes. I, I think, I think that's what you'll see in our LCAP and in our strategy moving forward to encourage more greater access to these higher level courses.
So I, I did want, because this speaks to kind of also a broader of, of that whole focus on redesignation and, you know, getting those kids. And the other thing is, but do we have anything that we can tease out instructionally? Because from what you're describing, you know, there's, there's that checkpoint, but they actually, in order to even get into that checkpoint, there's a score, right, that they have to achieve? So have we, have we looked at instructionally, you know, I guess backwards mapping, where these kids instructionally begin to really have difficulty in elementary school that can?
It's math. In a certain moment, it's math.
Yeah.
It's math, um, it's such a predominant predictive of future kind of opportunity. I'm not saying success, but future opportunity. Because the, and the data, it jumps out when you start to analyze the data of what that roadmap for success, and it determines how you determine success. Please don't listen, you know, but, but that potential and that opportunity, what doors get opened as a result of that placement and, and awareness around, as early as the sixth grade. That's why Mrs. Ross and I were leading that conversation with Mr. Mayfield and, uh, Dart Patistic around sixth grade math. And we met with all the sixth grade math teachers. And it was fantastic to start to see that conversation start to take place about the importance of significance around sixth grade math. And not just the curriculum standards, but the pedagogical approach to math in sixth grade. Because for the first time in those conversations, we can clearly articulate to a sixth grade math teacher how important and significant it is, because we're looking at whether they're at ninth grade and we're looking at whether they're at eleventh grade. And to backwards map that to a sixth grader and a sixth through eighteen, our teachers are like, wow, this is like monumental. Yeah, really.
So do we have the ability, looking at, to, as you're looking at the standards and you have a ton of student hits and the weighted standard that leads students to be able to, you know, a- attain this opportunity, this, this window of opportunity? Because that really even, I think, you mentioned earlier than that.
Yeah, so part of that is also our work thinking through our intervention, uh, MTSS looking at fractions in fifth grade.
Huge.
Right?
Oh, wow.
And if you think back to our California High School exit exam days, where there was five components of the, like, CAFD and ECE. And a lot of people would be doing really, really well with number sense, but the students really struggled upon, uh, geometry and algebra and algebra functions. So we spent an enormous amount of time, while we talked about number sense, where really they knew number sense, they just didn't understand the algebra and algebra functions and geometry. So we pivoted at that moment with the algebra in high school, actually, we have to really focus on algebra functions, you know, and, and geometry, because that was the missing piece of the puzzle. So it's, it's a little bit of like looking at the standards, looking at fifth grade, looking at sixth grade and saying, okay, how do we shore up these skill sets to make sure that we have the students perfectly positioned for seventh grade entry point, on ramp, and accelerated math?
And what I would also add, I think math is the priority, but look at English.
Oh, yeah.
You know, like, that's, that's concerning to me too. You know, where we see a lot of student success across the district on the ASAC ELA, why aren't we seeing it, our Avid students meeting that cut point?
And then part of that work, as we proved last year, um, our, uh, interliterature, kind of curriculum and curricular adoption, looking at bringing high interest literature available to all of our students at all of our sites and the work that Jane's doing with our teams of teachers in ELA to make sure that we are really identifying key high interest areas for our students as well. Because that goes back to what Chris talked about in the helping kids survey. Uh, what's engaging? High interest, uh, Jane had an exercise in her PD work that Mrs. Ross and I sat in with the English departments on Friday. Um, how do you look at literature and is it relevant? Is it diverse? Is it engaging? Is it rigorous? Is it standards aligned? And they were plotting their own responses. And universally, what was coming out was engaging and diverse from the teachers.
Interesting.
Awesome.
So you can see when we get at the high school level that has open enrollment for honors and AP, we see more Avid students participating there. Um, so at Slow High, we have thirty-nine percent of our Avid students who could be in an honors math class are in one. Forty-eight percent are, who could be in an honors English class, meaning ninth and tenth grade. So only available honors English class, um, are in one. And at the coast, this is amazing, seventy-four percent, they have an honors math, which I didn't know until I, I pulled this data, which is a great celebration, and forty-six percent are there in honors English. Um, and so, you know, we do see this increase as time goes on. When we get to our AP courses, fifty-eight percent of our Avid students, um, who could take a AP course, meaning grades ten through twelve usually, um, are taking one. Forty-three percent of our Moro Bay High Avid students are taking an Avid, or an AP course. Um, and we want to see this number get higher, um, because we know that our Avid students can do this. It's just feeling like they belong in the AP courses and their, and honors courses, and that they're also supported in them. And I can tell you, it's a challenge when you're not in the advanced or accelerated classes in middle school and that social trafficking starts to happen. And so a lot of what Avid teachers have to do is build the confidence of their students. You belong there, I know you can do it, I want you to try it, I'm a friend from Avid to do it with. You know, and, and it takes some time for us to build their confidence back into those places.
Okay, well, let's say tomorrow, uh, a hundred kids, the, the middle schools that, I'm ready for Avid. What about staffing those, that program?
It's a pretty question. So if we had a hundred students at the middle school tomorrow saying, I want to be part of Avid, we would sit with the administrative team to feel the carve out, that's, we'd be able to do that.
Yeah, but it, but it, so we have, it takes whatever, five years to get your credential?
No.
We don't turn up to teach right now, it takes about five years for a regular teacher. And then Avid takes extra time, Jane, right?
Yeah, you don't need a specific credential to teach Avid. Any teacher can teach it, but we do have them go through professional development, but we can fast track that than teaching them how, um, to use the Avid strategies. I think in that situation, and this is a classic challenge for us, is as an elective, Avid students choose it to be their elective. That means they're not necessarily accessing other electives as, at the same rate that other students are. And so I do think we had talked about using these Avid belief systems and strategies in other classrooms was a really effective way to support students who might not be an elective itself.
We were able to talk about, I think the Cornell notes are growing. I mean, at St. Elsmid, they're putting in the Cornell notes.
Yeah, so I was, I was curious about, about this, because, uh, something you said, Mr. O'Connor, a couple of weeks ago, I think, is when, you know, colleges are looking at, doesn't matter whether a high school or a, or a AP class, he's going on it. What college, what they're looking at is if you're taking advantage of all the rigorous courses that are being offered. So if by scheduling our students, for whatever reason, because they have to take, you know, the elective and it, it, it prevents them from taking another rigorous course, how do, how do we?
I wa- I want to add to that, just to bring con- more context to it, is often our students need the Avid course to support them in being successful in the AP courses. So it's like, if, you know, if you add another rigorous course to take away this support, then there's some challenges there. But I agree with you, it's a scheduling issue, right? It's like, how do we provide this and that and this? Um, and Leslie Halli has more to say about that, but.
Yeah, it's a, it's a scheduling conundrum, however, also strategically, um, if you've got ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade Avid, as an example, if you were, can, if you just to have, recruit your Avid teacher at the ninth grade to be, uh, a math teacher, it means that if the student's properly positioned, um, they're probably ideally going to be in maybe tenth grade geometry. So imagine you have a math teacher be your Avid teacher, now you've got the geometry support. In the tenth grade, there are opportunities to take their first tenth grade AP course, might be a social studies course. So now you have your tenth grade social studies teacher be the Avid teacher. In the eleventh grade, now it's a lot more language-based, perhaps, maybe you're in an ELA, uh, lit AP. So ideally, you want to have your language arts teacher positioned in the eleventh grade. And perhaps maybe in the twelfth grade, it might be a science teacher or some variation of. So there's an intentionality of how you're recruiting teachers besides that the ability to create those meaningful relationships and really outreach and heart for kids, where you can actually position teachers dependent upon the subjects that are going to be hard hitting for that student in that grade level. Math may be a ninth grade or maybe a social studies in tenth grade, um, to provide that support of that access.
And I, I see, oh, sorry, I see Lena Egan has raised her hand again. I'm sorry to break in, I, everyone's the size of a pinhead, so I can't see what's going on.
I won't take that personally.
Lena, you're up.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if I should just wait till the end of the presentation, but my, to the, to the most recent point that Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Holly are, are addressing on scheduling issues, my question relates to, um, does the five-period trimester system at Slow High School, um, create a barrier for Avid students to complete those A through G requirements? Um, that meets UCCSU eligibility? Because you have your core four classes, English, math, social studies, and science are your core four. Then, uh, there's, uh, visual. Then, uh, there's, uh, visual and performing arts, you know, one year required, two years recommended. And then there's language of, uh, language other than English, two years required and three years recommended. And then the question was on the gender slide, so there's two-part questions. Between the drop in males between Laguna and Slow High School. And, you know, are, are, um, some of these Avid kids picking sports instead of Avid at the high school? Just questions, I don't, I really don't know the answer to that, so I was just curious.
I'll start with the second question first, I think. Um, I think that the, the potential for the students male specifically dropping off, I would say, yes. It could be sports, it also could be other elective opportunities that are available to them. It could be something that's involved in the career technical education specifically. Um, when you review the data for career technical education, you see a disproportionate number of males entering career technical education pathway courses as opposed to advanced placement courses, honors courses. And by default, that, that has an impact across the board. Uh, neither one is viewed differently from the other. Um, I think the schedule issue is always going to be the conundrum. Um, because as Jane said, the Avid course itself is year long. And that's that added built-in almost support for students in those academically rigorous courses that are being asked of the student for the college preparation. Which then has a, a factor to play with regard to their other courses that they can choose. But you're absolutely right, um, the A through G courses that they would have is a four-period opportunity because the fifth period would be their Avid course. The struggle is a student who wants to take Avid and, and then you fill in the end with C T E pathway opportunity, a sports opportunity. It might be quiet, it could be banned. That's where it gets really problematic.
And I think adding to our conversation about having our Avid, Avid students out as leaders in the campus and connected to the community. That's a way that you do that, right? So there are limitations for them.
So you're not visible if you're not able to be, if you think about it, just, it's, it's impossible to be visible if you're not involved in it. Fill in like A S P, but you can't be in A S P and in Avid and take those rigorous, challenging, engaging courses. It's impossible to be in sports, Avid, and it, it's impossible to be in C T E pathway courses and Avid. And there's that and piece that's really problematic. And I'm not saying it's solved for all students, but that's specifically to the question that you're asking, I think, even for Avid students.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, I guess I didn't understand the question because, uh, uh, because what Lena's asking was, does the trimester schedule impact, um, the ability of our students? So that made me think, well, two, high schools are on different schedules. So is, is, does the semester system allow for, you know, greater, um, ability of our students? Because it was, it was specific and I didn't really understand what those, what are the barriers of the trimester system? That, that, you know, she was speaking to.
Well, I think it's the master schedule itself. Like when you're positioning the master schedule, when you're dealing with a semester, you've got a week and you've got six periods. When you're dealing with the trimester system, you've got trimester one, two and three, you've got a five-period day and you're dealing with As and Bs. So you've got As and Bs. And you're thinking about how do you position those As and Bs within five periods? Because, um, it's almost like a Rubik's cube. And you are, it's, it's Tetris on steroids because you're looking at positionally, how everything flows. And what might work, I use the example of what we have Avid fourth period, sharing that example. As soon as we put in a master schedule, Avid is fourth period because of the Laza camaraderie, all good reasons, right? That means that that's an inhibiting factor on your overall master schedule, that anything that competes with fourth period, an Avid student cannot take. So if you said, for example, electrical engineering is fourth period, no Avid kid can ever take electrical engineering. Period, end of story, done. And now, if an Avid student is in fifth period athletics, because they want to play sports, now they can't take electrical engineering and they cannot take, and fill in the blank for fifth period is?
A P O system.
A P O system. So now you're like, okay, done. Where do I put these Avid students? I put them in first, second and third, and my choices for that group of students are the following. So those are all the constraining factors down there.
Living opportunity.
Living opportunity. Now, that's the same, uh, if you have a bad conversation or a theater conversation. But it becomes a little bit more pronounced because the whole ethos around the Avid is, yeah, enrolled in the Avid course because it does create the community, it creates the buying, it creates the support network. All of those really positive reasons to be in this to get you to the next point.
And, and Lena, to your, to your question, the only mitigating factor that I can think of, given the constraints that Leslie just shared, would be our summer experience. Um, is treating, treating, um, high school as a, and even middle school as a year-round prospect for our kids. So in other words, we're already seeing a whole number of kids taking history in the summer. Taking math in the summer for original credit. So that it opens up sections in the normal school year. And so I, I sus- I suspect when we start doing the six-year planning and add to, you know, and so the four-year plan, the six-year plan, I think we'll start becoming quite sophisticated with our kids, especially our, our Avid students about the realities of the high school, the, the limitations of the high school schedule. And, and that juxtaposed with their ambitions, their goals, their targets. And I think that's why we have to keep a really close eye on how we support and develop our summer models. Because that's going to be the place that I think, um, allows our kids to either take their cu- uh, career C T E completion, their, um, stay on top of math, stay on top of English. Um, I don't know, those are the thoughts I have on that.
And it's interesting, we see with our Avid students, since so few of them are in accelerated math in middle school, they do accelerate in the summer during high school. Uh, and that's why you see a lot of them in honors math courses too, so.
And again, just to, to the last piece of this, those specific slides, when you think about middle school and you've got single-digit percentages enrolled in accelerated courses. And you come to high school and you've got forty and fifty and sixty percents of the Avid students enrolled in honors and fifty plus percent in the A P course. It, it, it just means that we have a work to do when we're backwards mapping that piece back to the middle school. It is so, so important to recognize that those exit or entry points are stopping the opportunity for kids. It's just, we have to recognize that. It's stopping the opportunity for kids. We're, we're the architects and engineers of the system. We are creating a system that is stopping opportunities. But we gotta learn that.
Well, now we're in business of undoing that.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, last slide?
Yeah, and I, I think just to wrap it up with what Leslie was saying is we need to continue to work on our recruitment efforts reaching students who, um, would benefit from Avid. I think Mark had a lot of great comments about, for the students who don't choose Avid that are from similar demographics, how are we replicating some of the success for them? I think that's important. And then also, once our students have opportunities for rigorous coursework, how are we getting them in and how are we supporting them once they're there? Um, and just continuing to, I think, get our students to a place at the end of their educational experience with us that they have many options to choose from. So, you know, my kind of, um, message to my Avid students was, I, whatever you choose, I want you to have the option to do it by the time you're done here. You know, so that's why college eligibility is so important for us is, you know, often that's our students' dream to do that, so we want to make sure they're in a position to achieve that when they're with us. So, thank you.
Okay, just like, is there such a thing as an elementary Avid program?
Yeah, um, it looks a little different. It's not an elective, it's more of, um, instructional strategies and belief system. And we're on teachers through professional development, but Avid elementary does exist, just not in our district. Although it seems like Aaron's doing some version of that at Field Smith, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then I, my understanding is that getting, somehow opening up a door for parents, the Avid parents. My understanding is it's difficult because they work nights, they work three jobs, they don't speak English. Um, many of them don't speak English. Um, so I think that's on your list of improvements. Um, if I can, I, I was impressed when Laguna Middle School was doing barbecues for all parents and saying, come, and then they sort of had a, you know, trapped audience. And they were able to get a lot of parents up in wondering schools to watch, how much that actually helped. Um, and so I don't know about that. And then, uh, uh, back in the day, simply Benita School would actually send people to the churches. Cause the churches would do, here's the, here's the church program, and then they'd do a family barbecue afterwards. And they'd send somebody there to recruit. And so I, I just throw those out. Um, and then my understanding is that there, there are some places where the middle school or the mid, or the elementary, it's just a hundred percent Avid. I mean, we see the data here, it works, there's more kids percentage-wise, so I don't know if that's a consideration. Um, but those are just some thoughts that came to mind. And I just, I'm just so excited. I'm just so excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Leslie or Jane? Okay, um, Ellen, do you have a question?
Yeah, you know, I just have a comment. You know, we had a period of time when we weren't offering Avid as, as robustly as we are now. And, um, I think we certainly now have come to really realize the importance and, uh, of it to our school community and the benefits reaped by our kids.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I believe it will continue to grow. Just, you know, it's, we're putting a lot of energy behind it and we're seeing the results. Um, and, um, you know, Jane, what did you say to me out on break? About we tend to focus in with teachers on strategies?
Yeah.
Why don't you share that with the group?
Uh, I, I think often when we think about professional development or even teachers think about themselves, as far as increasing student success, we think about what strategy? You know, what can I do? And I think a key piece about serving students, particularly from these key demographics is who you are as a person and as a teacher and what you believe. Um, and I think that's, that's where you get the family feeling, the support. Um, is that our teachers care deeply about these students and care deeply about them being successful. Um, and, and that's, it, teaching is all about who you are, you know? Um, and how you show up each day with your students.
Well said. That's a great way to, to end this meeting. Ellen, would you like to adjourn?
Hi, we're ready to adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Safe travels back from Montana, Ellen.
Thank you.